Good morning and welcome to the Jefferson County Commission meeting today's special meeting is Thursday, May 30th, 2024. It's 9:30 a.m. We want to start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Number one is Nikki Painter, Chief Deputy Clerk of Elections, and this is for the certification of the 2024 primary election results.
Good morning. So I have two items for you to sign. One is the certification, which is basically all of the results that we went over during Canvas, including the additional 43 ballots that you voted to count. The second thing that I have for you to sign is the precinct audit verification form, and it basically just states that we did draw one random drawing of a precinct that was hand counted, and there were no discrepancies found.
Okay. I'll move to prove the certification submitted here by Nikki Painter, Chief Deputy Clerk of Elections.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion case, three zero.
Do we need a separate motion to sign the precinct audit form, or is that all part of the package?
It's right here.
So each of us signs on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not blue this one.
Oh, sorry. You said no.
Have you had? Oh, before, okay. I saw this one too.
Yeah, we need two copies, one original first to the state and one original Stacy.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We're going to move on to agenda item two. This is again an interview for the vacant Harpersville and Shippstown Commission seat. We had a handful of applicants. Each Commissioner had an opportunity to choose up to two per district. It looks like today we are interviewing five, six people. And we're going to start off at the top. I will ask before we do start that anybody who has applied and it's here, if you could, if you don't mind, you could take your seat with you and sit in the hallway and we'll close the door because I don't know if it's fair for you to listen to the questions before we listen to questions for your interview. So we're going to go in order as the paper here in front of me. We're going to start up with Deidre Catterton. Yes, ma'am, you're here. So if anybody else is here that has applied, please take a chair with you. If you are, better yet, we can maybe put, take some chairs in the hallway and we'll close the door. I think there was only one here. And Jessica, if you want to put some chairs in the hallway, it'd be great. We'll just wait a second. And of course, after the interview, if the candidates feel like they want to sit in their room, they certainly can because their interview will be over with. It wouldn't, it's no harm, no foul to listen to the remainder part of the interviews. So you're more than welcome to stay in the room.
Do you list off the names of those you're going to interview?
Yes, the list of names who, who has, I'll list the names that has confirmed. There's one that did confirm back, Deidre Catterton. Did I say that right?
I'm here.
Yeah, okay. He wanted me to list, just list the names. James Cook, Kelvin Upson, Patricia Nolan, and Todd Cotgreve. Okay, the ones that have confirmed are Deidre Catterton, James Cook, Kelvin Upson, Patricia Nolan, and Todd Cotgreve. And hopefully I'm pronouncing that name right. All right, it looks like we have one candidate here. If you want to come forward, ma'am.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for applying.
Yes, thank you.
You can go ahead and see, have a seat.
Great, thank you.
All right. Can you tell us about yourself?
My name is Deidre Catterton. I have lived in Eastlands since 2002. I have
Excuse me, Deidre, you're going to have to speak adjusted so you're closer to the mic.
Can you hear me now?
There.
Okay, super.
Doesn't record well if you're not speaking.
Under understandable.
Yeah.
My name is Deidre Catterton. I have lived in Eastlands in Charlestown since 2002. I have an undergraduate degree in government and politics, a master's in public administration, and have been practicing law for 33 years now. Minnesota for 29 and the District of Columbia for 30, kind of overlaps there. And I am very committed to our county. I raised my daughter single-handedly. She loves West Virginia. She is in New York City, living there because, like many of the young people, there is not a lot to do here in Charlestown, and I'd like to help change that. Clearly, to bring my daughter home, but in any event, she is living there and she has told me never to sell her home because it is a home that she was raised in. And I, I want to make a difference. That's what I want to do. Make a difference to our community and be here to serve at your pleasure.
Why are you interested in this position? I mean, you kind of answered that a little bit, but more, any more detail?
Absolutely. I'm interested because I do want to serve the community. I do want to help in bringing the development that's coming to our county. I mean, it's amazing to me that the apartments are for rent for above the two mortgages I have on my home in Eastlands. I, this is amazing to me. I want to bring development here. I want to bring interchange. I want to bring people to Charlestown, West Virginia, and understand why it is the home that I love.
All right. This is a short-term position. It may last days or into November. What do you hope to accomplish during your term?
Well, I hope to help on the different issues that are out there. Let's see, there's the fire levy, there's the budget for 2024, 2025, there's a comprehensive plan, there's the Hilltop situation, which I did just read something about. So I'm not clear how, if that's resolved itself, but I want to be here to help and, and get these issues resolved.
Okay. Don't worry, nobody's been clear on the Hilltop for 15 years.
I heard something about it, but anyway, thank you.
What strategies do you employ to foster a positive and productive work environment?
What strategies? I don't know, good communication with the community openness and an open forum for the community. I don't understand why on during my stead and the Board of Zoning Appeals, why more people did not come out to those meetings. I was an alternate than a member and then vice chair. And I don't understand, we need to get, my strategy would be to get more people involved in the community because they always have something to say after the fact. But we need it before the fact so that we, as a commission, can cooperate effectively.
Thank you.
What does the Open Meetings Act mean to you?
I believe that everybody should have an opportunity to speak on, on issues. I haven't done my research on the act, so to speak, so I have to defer to you on, on what that entails. But I believe that people should be able to express their opinions and be heard. And, but they need to show up.
That's true.
They need to show up, not after the fact. Solar panels is an extremely big issue, and people didn't have a problem with it until all of a sudden there were solar panels.
Yeah.
I mean, I was on the BCA in any event. That's where I am today.
Okay.
Sir?
Sure. And Open Meetings Act is just our local, meaning state, name for our version of FOIA. Different states will have different names for the law, but it functions the same way.
Understandable.
Generally speaking. If you, well, actually, let me start with an easy one. I think Commissioner Sauer already asked us, but just a general question. Do you have any priorities for the next six months for the County Commission?
I, do I have any priorities?
Among the several issues that you listed that are coming, do you see any priorities for you that you would want to focus on?
The comprehensive plan and the budget, I believe, would be my top two issues.
Makes a lot of sense. Thanks. This might sound a little bit tricky, but actually it does come up every now and then. And I'm going to ask everybody the same question. If you want a policy outcome, or in other words, if you, if you want something to happen, and a motion is made that would make that happen, but the commission's legal counsel advises that the motion is illegal and it violates state code, how would you proceed in that situation?
I would not agree. Let me understand. If you're saying it's illegal, I would not vote for it. Is that what I'm understanding you to say? Legal counsel? Like, yeah, no, absolutely. If we are advised one way, that is the way that we should need, we need to proceed as an attorney.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for me. Anything else?
No.
That's all we have for you.
Well, that's great. I do appreciate you, sir, sir, misses. Thank you. And I look forward to hearing from you in the near future.
Ma'am.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
With all due respect, Commissioner Majdi, I would like to make a comment about your interpretation about the Open Meetings Act. It's not just FOIA. It's that the public has a right to know what's on our meeting agenda, and we're not to stray from that agenda. So everyone is informed what could be discussed that day.
Oh, you're absolutely right. Yeah. I was just trying to make it a little bit easier to reference, but you're, you're right. Thank you for clarifying that. All right, our, our next interview is James Cook. Do you know if he's here? If, if he's not, we'll take, we could take the next one. I know we're running slightly ahead of schedule.
I mean, you did say it's okay for me to remain.
Yes, ma'am. After your interview, it's, it's, there's no harm, no foul for you to remain in the room. You, you just didn't want the people listening to the questions before, beforehand. All right. Good morning. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. You want to take a seat?
Absolutely.
All right. All right. Mr. Cook, could you tell us about yourself?
Sure. Glasses away. Can I read an opening statement for that?
If you, if it's in your opening statement, absolutely.
Absolutely. So ladies and gentlemen, the commission and, and biceaters, thank you for this opportunity to present my case for why I should be selected to fill the vacant commissioner seat in Jefferson County, West Virginia. Our county has faced significant challenges recently, and now for more than ever, we need proactive and dedicated leadership to steer us back on course. In recent times, our county has been hamstrung by a few, leading to stagnation and missed opportunities. It is time for us to actively engage and address these issues head-on, ensuring that Jefferson County not only recovers but thrives. One of the most critical areas requiring immediate attention is the fulfillment of contracts, particularly those concerning life-saving equipment. Our residents deserve the assurance that essential services and equipment are not only available but also maintained to the highest standards, ensuring these contracts are fulfilled as paramount to the safety and well-being of our community. Moreover, we must release bonds to empower developers, thereby fostering a conducive environment to business growth within the county. By removing these financial constraints, we can stimulate economic development, create jobs, and enhance the quality of life for all residents. I have three primary goals to pursue this unwavering dedication. One, to be a voice of the constituents in Jefferson County. I understand the gravity of this responsibility, representing the interests and concerns of our residents will be my top priority. I will listen, engage, and act on behalf of our community, ensuring that their voices are heard and their needs addressed. Two, to ensure the county gets back on track. Conducting important and regulatory business efficiently and transparently is crucial. We are accountable to the people of Jefferson County and it is our duty to ensure their safety and financial security. I will work diligently to restore trust and integrity in our country, county's operations. And three, to promote the great qualities of Jefferson County. Our county has immense potential. By enhancing tourism, improving infrastructure, attracting new businesses and residents, and expanding our tax base, we can provide the necessary services our residents deserve. I'm committed to highlighting the strengths of Jefferson County and working tirelessly to build a prosperous and vibrant community. In conclusion, I am deeply committed to serving Jefferson County with integrity, dedication, and transparency. Together, we can overcome the challenges and pave the way for a brighter future, and I'm ready to work collaboratively, collaboratively with my fellow commissioners and all stakeholders to achieve these goals. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
For this opportunity.
Um, you touched on it on several of my other questions, but one I want to maybe hold, hung down on a little bit. What strategies do you employ to foster a positive and productive work environment?
Sure. So strategies are very global. So to go from global to granular, one is the listening, right? So we've heard our constituents make their voices known on certain issues that are very necessarily, it needs to be addressed quickly in the county. So listening is at most and paramount to what I, my first part of the strategy would be. I have to hear their voice. I have to hear what they're saying. But I also have some ideas of my own, too. So, and I think that the strategy is to also work with you three and whoever the other person is that you select for the fifth chair. So that is a collaborative voice within the county and leadership to also work with the different parties that are out there. So it's a voice of the people, the voice of, of the commissioners to work strategy strategically to build the county.
Okay.
Oh. What does the Open Meetings Act mean to you?
The Open Meetings Act?
Yes.
I'm not very familiar with the Open Meetings Act, but just by the title of that, we have to be very transparent, and that's why I think we're on the, the virtual so that everybody can see what we're saying and doing and as we adjudicate the, the needs of the county.
Well, it involves the agenda also, but it is all about transparency. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. Appreciate it. The opening statement. Definitely agree with collaborative spirit. I think that's really important. You mentioned your priorities already. That was my first question.
Okay.
Okay. I have a second question that I'm asking everybody, then a series of questions for those who are registered in the Mountain Party. The first question I have that's for everybody. It might sound a little bit tricky, but this actually does come up.
Okay.
So if you want a policy outcome, or in other words, if you want something to happen, and a motion is made that would accomplish that, the thing that you want to happen, but the commission's legal counsel advises that the motion is illegal or it violates state code, how would you proceed in that situation?
That's a, what an incredible question. And I, I think everybody reads tea leaves differently, especially when it comes to law. And I think that if a legal advisor is giving you a pretty good summary of what that law or that code says, it's, it's, it's better to, to follow that guideline, right? But it's also important for me to do due diligence to see what the code says itself, because there may be a different interpretation of that. I can read code one way, and you could read it another way and come up with very different answers for the same code. So that goes to the due diligence of it. But for the most part, I would heed that advice.
Understood. Thanks. And just a factual question. You're registered as a member of the Mountain Parties, is that right?
I am.
Okay, got it. I'm deeply concerned about the Mountain Party platform, its inclusion of mandatory sexual orientation education for elementary school students, single payer healthcare, free college, and race-based reparations. We don't have time to cover any of those. Instead, I'm just going to focus on elements in the Mountain Party platform that would directly affect your work as a commissioner.
Sure.
So I have a couple of questions about policing. I've read the Mountain Party platform for West Virginia. As a commissioner, would you work to, quote, gradually disarm local police, end quote, which for our district would be the county sheriff?
So as you know, Commissioner Majah, you could be a member of a party and not agree with all the fundamentals of that party. That's one I absolutely disagree with.
Good to know. On taxation, do you support the elimination of, quote, corporate tax breaks and subsidies, end quote? And in your view, would that include so-called tax increment financing, sometimes referred to as a TIF, which is something we've been discussing with respect to the Hilltop Project?
Well, I think the tax code in, in its entirety needs to be reformed, right? From the federal down to the state to the county. So we don't do our constituent, I mean, we rebelled over a 22-cent tax over tea back in the 1700s. So why are we having such a graduated tax system that allows certain people benefits and others not? So I think it needs to be looked at intently.
Okay. And there's also a call for a new tax called a land value tax. That's something that we would have the authority to create on the commission. Do you support the creation of a, a new tax called a land value tax?
We already do that with our four tiers, right? So tier one through four, that's of the land value. If we give corporations a higher tax burden for levels three and four, then we're already doing that, whether they're a municipality or not. So there's already the land value tax there. I think, again, it needs to be looked at and reformed.
Okay. On agriculture, do you support removing government subsidies to farmers who do not, quote, "practice organic agriculture"?
You know, that, there's a lot of details there that I'm not familiar with. I know that we subsidize corn in Nebraska, right? So I don't know all of those intricacies here, so I could not.
And that's fine. That's fine. As another agriculture question, as commissioner, would you work to create a farm worker bill of rights for illegal immigrants? Again, pulling from the website.
For illegal immigrants?
Illegal, yeah.
So I think the definition of terms is critical to this discussion. Illegal is the crucial part of that. I wouldn't do anything to support illegal immigration in the area.
Okay. Housing and zoning is a huge issue in the county. It's come up. It's on the front page of the paper this week and every other week. A few questions. Do you believe it is the government's responsibility to, quote, "construct and maintain sufficient public housing to ensure an end to homelessness," end quote?
My doctorate is in ending poverty. And I think that there are some strategies that we can do across the party lines that can end homelessness and reduce poverty to almost a fraction of what it is. So I'm not adverse to looking at that strategy.
Okay. Do you support creating a, quote, "mobile home cooperative fund to provide loans to support cooperative ownership of mobile home parks," end quote?
Mobile home parks, meaning like trailer parks versus a KOA? Again, I'd have to look at all the background on that to make it a discussion point.
Fair enough. And two more.
Okay.
Do you believe the County Commission should provide, quote, "apartments for homeless people," end quote?
So again, my doctorate is in ending poverty. There are a lot of strategies that we could bring into this that do not, we don't do now. So that could be a strategy worth pursuing or looking at, at least into.
Okay. And I'm, I'm sorry to even ask this question, but it's on the website. It's included in the platform. Do you support the decriminalization of prostitution?
That's the oldest profession in the book, isn't it? So it's hard to say. We, we think about 40 years ago when we looked at gambling, gambling, and now we have Charlestown races and slots, right? So we've already breached that ethical, immoral, or legal code. I am not opposed to listening to what the, what everybody has to say about that.
Okay. Thanks so much. Those are my questions. I'm going to ask them for everybody who's registered in the party. It's not personal for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi. You, from your information that you provided us, you've been in the military, and so I would think that would necessitate moving around a lot. Can you tell me your, where you have lived? You know, I'm just curious, and if you chose to come to Jefferson County, or you were raised here, or what your background is?
So in the military, I've moved over 17 times.
That's what I.
Right? And each move is, you get to experience a lot. You get to see all sorts of the parts of the country and the world, really.
Right.
So I've been deployed to many different countries around the world and many different bases within Conus and Oconus, continental U.S. and outside continental U.S. Alaska. Alaska was my favorite duty station because I flew CH-47 helicopters, and nothing beats looking at the aurora borealis flying from Fairbanks to Fort Greeley and just seeing the stars. And during that time was the Hail Bob Comet. So going under goggles, we could see Hail Bob when we picked up goggles or lift up goggles we couldn't. Beautiful. So the few, that tells you something. I've seen a lot. I chose to live here. Three years ago, I met my bride and I moved here. I've been involved in local politics, and I've been involved in a lot of the issues that, that Jefferson County has. So my face is known. My name is not as known, but this is a choice to live here. Two years ago, well, year ago December, my mother passed away. And so I ended up inheriting her house in Phoenix. So I do have property in Arizona that we rent out for an Airbnb. So we're a small business owner. But I do live here. This is our place where we choose.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And you're more than welcome to stay in the room after your interview.
Okay.
Yep. Next one. Good morning.
Morning.
When you talk into the mic, you have to talk directly into it or it won't pick you up. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
My name is Kelvin Upson. I am a retired Navy commander. Served 24 years in the, in the greatest Navy in the world. I am a combat veteran. I've served in, in many different places. I graduated from the academy in 1991, following the footsteps of my dad to join the Navy. Spent some time on ships, doing shipboard communications, had the privilege of being a program manager and a portfolio manager. In essence, managing the costs and scales and performance of large contracts. Ultimately, I had the privilege of volunteering and serving in the, in Baghdad, Iraq, combat zone. And I, I feel that that is a key, I've got some key skills and lessons learned from that particular duty station that I think can apply, can be applied down to the county level for this particular position. I moved here in 2003, raised my, raised my family here. My, my son went to Jefferson County, my, my daughter went to Washington. We love it here, and I'm looking forward to further discussion concerning this position.
All right. Why are you interested in this position?
Um, I've always had a heart to serve. Obviously, I've, I've served my country for, for 24 years and in. And indirectly, I continue to serve my country. I'm a defense contractor now since 2015. So I still support and defend the constitution. I support many military department programs from a weapons perspective as well, so I continue to serve right now. And one of the things I learned when I was in military is that always look for an opportunity to step up, to fill a need. When I first heard of this opening and vacancy, thought to myself, what an excellent opportunity to give back to this community that had provided so much to me. And translate the serving of my country to the serving of the county and the citizens in this county. And what better opportunity would be to to contribute and to be a part of a team who's responsible for building and expanding and growing this county to ensure that we have a better and safer place for, to live, to work and to raise our family. So it was a great opportunity and I think I would be grateful for that.
This is a short-term position. It may last days or into November. What do you hope to accomplish during your term?
One of the things that I think I can bring to the table and help accomplish for the Board of Commissioners is is team building and team dynamics and team performance. In my opinion, I've learned, having served in military, I have been in charge of many teams, large, small. So I understand the team dynamics. And in my opinion, the performance of the team is very important. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you as a team, not as a group of folks, but as a team. Because I think if we perform as a team, we will have a better, we will better be able to serve our community. So I'd like to understand the strengths and weaknesses of the team. I've been able to do that throughout my career and be able to take advantage of those strengths and to be able to fill in the gaps of those weaknesses to be able to work as one, as a team. Because that is the most important thing in order for us to be able to serve our best of our community.
What strategies do you employ to foster a positive and productive work environment?
People first. The mission, the goals, or the guidance or the policies cannot be executed without an environment for people to grow and excel. I pride myself as a team lead to make sure that I foster the relationships with no open door policy and give my team the resources that they need to be successful. And the way to do that is to foster relationship. Ensure that anything that you tell them to do, you would do yourself. I think that's very important. They need to trust you and understand you and know that you have their back. And so I will work with anybody and everybody in order to fulfill the mission and to meet the goals and to satisfy any county commission policies that we have in place.
Oh, okay. What does the Open Meetings Act mean to you? Have you heard of the Open Meetings Act?
Specifically, I have an understanding of the importance of transparency. And my understanding would be an Opens Meeting Act would be in order to address that, address that issue. And I have not actually read the Open Meetings Act, but it would be my understanding that you allow this form to be able to be broadcast so that stakeholders and the community and county citizens have an opportunity to see what the commissioners are doing, how they're doing, and whether or not they are satisfying the roles and responsibilities that was provided to them for you, the West Virginia Code and Constitution.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and there's a requirement to give people notice so they know what's going to be on the agenda. Which is a key element, it's actually related to one of my questions, I'm asking everybody the same question. It might sound a little bit tricky or complicated, but it actually does come up on the commission every now and then, so I'll go through it slowly. If you want a policy outcome, or in other words, you want something to happen. And a motion is made to accomplish that thing, whatever it is that you want to happen. But the commission's legal counsel, right on cue, but the commission's legal counsel advises that the motion is illegal and it violates state code. How would you proceed in that scenario?
Obviously, I would trust our legal counsel. If he or she makes that statement, it's for a reason. And I would ask for clarification on the specific reasons on why it is illegal. And get a better understanding of why they felt the need to make that motion. But more importantly, I think it's important as a commissioner is to make sure that we bring down the roadblocks, bring down barriers to policymaking. It's a very important aspect of what we do as a commissioner is make policies. We address, we determine the problems and we provide policy for that to adjust and to solve that problem. So if there are barriers, I would look for opportunities to work, not only with legal counsel, but with any other stakeholders to determine the best approach to be able to satisfy that initial problem and be able to move forward with that policy in a legal manner. And in my opinion, there's not, there isn't all or nothing. There's a compromise where we're able to work together as legal counsel. They need to trust you and you need to trust them to act on behalf of the county citizens.
Thank you, and I think Commissioner Stalaver's question has already covered this, but I'll just ask it anyway for consistency since I'm asking everybody. What would your priorities be for the next six months if you were on the commission?
I think the first priority is to be as best informed as I can on all, on as many issues as I can, as quickly as possible. This is a fast-moving train. And I pride myself, especially in the military, to be able to learn and adapt quickly. On many occasions, I've had, I've walked into a new duty station, talks to the guy for an hour, hey, I gotta get out the door, I got a plane to catch, good luck. Here's the phone, here's the, here's your desk and your troops are out there. Here's the mission, go do it. So I pride myself in being a quick learner, getting up to speed on what needs to happen. I don't think I'm in a position to talk about what needs to be improved within this commission. I want to be informed, understand the issues, understand the stakeholders' stances, your stances on what we did and why we did it. But I will go back to one thing that, as I stated before, I'm a really big proponent of teamwork. And I think definitely one of the priority is building the strongest county commission team that we can, because that's the only way that we're going to be able to solve, address problems and the concerns of the citizens of this great county. Thank you.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. And you're more than welcome to stay in the room after your interview, so you're more than welcome to have a seat. And we'll move to our, we are running slightly ahead of schedule. And we'll move on to our next interview. No one's here? All right. Like I said, we're running slightly ahead of schedule, so we're going to just Yeah, we're roughly and half, roughly half an hour ahead of schedule. So what we're going to do is just take a recess until our next application, excuse me, shows up. And we can Good morning.
We're good. Good morning.
Welcome, we were taking a short break, we're running ahead of schedule.
Well, I'm glad I'm here early.
Yes, ma'am. All right. All right, well, we'll go ahead and start. Can you tell us about yourself?
Well, of course I can, and a lot of people already know about me, but my name is Patsy Nolan. I have lived in Jefferson County all my life. We've raised all three of our children here. Our grandchildren have been raised here and our great-grandchildren are being raised here. I've been in public service all my life. The first real job I ever had was a secretary for the state police. And then from that gave me the experience that I felt was a good fit for working in the magistrate system. So in the magistrate court, I'm dating myself here, but when they went, but when they went from the justice of the peace system to the magistrate system, I worked, prior to that, I'd worked for Ephy Day, who was a magistrate at the time, a former JP. And so I worked for him until the magistrate system needed another magistrate. So there, at the time, there were two. And so I knew they needed a third, so I decided to run for the job. My first experience at political, running for political office. And I was elected to that position. And I held that job for 10 years until the clerk of the circuit court position became available. And they were, they were looking for someone to fill an unexpired term. So I was appointed to that position and I held that position, excuse me, from 1994 until yeah, from 1994 until 2008, when I ran for, decided to run for county commission. And I was elected to county commission, I served 12 years, two terms on the commission, and then I retired. So Jefferson County has always been my home. I'm passionate about the county and it's always meant a lot to me, it still does. And so that's pretty much me in a nutshell.
You touched on this a little bit, but but why are you interested in this position?
Well, you know, I love retirement. I have thoroughly and am thoroughly continuing to enjoy it. But when I saw the notice that came out that said that you were going to appoint two people to fill the terms that had been vacated temporarily. I'm not sure how that's going to work because it's a little bit confusing. But I just felt this really strong pull because I know I can fill the position, I can walk in and I can sit in a chair. I can fill the position and it's like I never left. It would be like I never left. And I, we need help. This county is, it really saddens me to see where we've come. I never in my wildest dreams could have imagined sitting here right now being interviewed for this position because I never had any idea and I don't think anyone could have ever foreseen this. But I just didn't have any idea that I'd be sitting here right now. But I honestly and truly I feel like you need my help and I feel like the people of this county need my help. And I'm willing to give it. That's why I'm sitting here.
This is a short-term position. It may last days or into November. What do you hope to accomplish during your term?
Well, I think we need to pick up, I know that you're working on a comprehensive plan. I think that's a really important thing to work on and to, I know that it's far along in the process. That's something that is really important and I would certainly like to help help see that through for as long as you need me. I can be here for a day or I can be here for six months, whatever, whatever happens in the meantime. I'm not sure what that's going to be. But but I just feel like the work of the county needs to move on. You know, I think we've spent too much time and through, you know, through no fault of your own, you know, we've spent too much time dealing with issues that we should never have been dealing with. And it's time to move on, our people deserve better. And I think that they deserve more and they definitely want more. And so those are the thing, that's the, that is the one thing that I see is really one of the most critical issues. And I also know that you are now handling ambulance. You're administering to the ambulance, ambulances and the emergency services. I think that's a really important topic too. And I know that it's really important to a lot of people in this county. So I just feel like those are the things that are pressing. And those are the things that I would like to work on, whether I'm here for a week or six months.
Okay. What strategies do you employ to foster a positive and productive work environment?
Well, first of all, the people that I work with are like family to me. They've always been like family to me. I have the deepest respect, excuse me, for all of them, for what they do. It hasn't been easy. I know that because I still hear from them. And I know it's been difficult, so I would love to see morale improved. And I know that, I know that I'm well thought of by the people that work in the county for the most part. And I'm just willing to try to improve the morale and and make it a more upbeat, as much as can be, as much as it can be for however long I would be in the position. And beyond that, I still talk to a lot of the people that work here. Because, you know, you don't work with someone. I've worked in the county for, since 1984. You don't work in positions that long and not develop strong friendships and bonds with people. So that's what I hope to achieve.
Excuse me. I ask this of everyone. What does the Open Meetings Act mean to you?
Well, the Open Meetings Act is important in that there are certain things. Transparency is very important. But, but there are also things that have to be discussed outside of the public view because of the nature of whatever the topic. And I know that when things are discussed during executive session, that they have to stay within executive session and they cannot be discussed outside of executive session. And I know people get really upset about that, but if they, if they really understood what what the consequence would be, were it not for being able to maintain that confidentiality, you know, they wouldn't understand if they, if you're in the position, you understand it better. But yeah, I think the Open Meetings Act is one of the most important things, things because of the expectation of transparency in government. I think it builds trust among our citizens and they need to be able, they need to feel that they're, feel comfortable with what commissioners are with what commissioners are doing. And, and that they're, you know, that so many times they just think they're, they're probably upset because they don't know what's going on. And eventually it does come up, eventually it does come out. Eventually, most of the things that we discuss or are discussed in executive session are able, once things are settled, they're able to become public. But I know that they, there are certain things that just have to remain, remain confidential.
Thank you, I'm like Commissioner Tab, I'm asking everybody the same questions. And you may have touched on this already, response to Commissioner Stallop's questions. But what are your views for Jefferson County? And what do you think would be your priorities for the next six months?
Well, my priorities, excuse me, my priorities at this point are, I think, working on the comprehensive plan. I think that is something that's really important and it's going to steer what this county is going to look like for the next 10 years at least. And that's one of the things that really, that I think is important. The most pressing thing at this point is getting five people sitting up there so that the work of the county can continue. That, that's a priority at this point. And that, that would be, and over the next six months, I would, would just be willing to do whatever I could do to help further along the agendas of the commission and to, and do the work of the county as needed.
Thank you, and I'm asking everybody this question. If you want a policy outcome, or in other words, if you want something to happen, and a motion is made to accomplish that goal, but the commission's legal counsel advises that the motion is illegal or violates state code. How would you proceed in that scenario?
I am always going to listen to the smartest person in the room when it comes to the law. And that's not me. I'm going to listen to the attorney. And that, I've always, I've always done that. I would never, you know, he studies this, they, he, she, they study this. They study the law day in, day out, that's what they get, that's what they do. And they're very good at what they do, they do. I have had that experience over my tenure as a commissioner prior. And I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with a lawyer every time.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I'm good.
That's all we have.
Okay.
And you're more than welcome to stay in the room.
Okay.
Not here yet. All right, we have, we have one more person to interview. They're not here yet, we are running slightly ahead of schedule. So we'll just take a recess until they come.
Are we still recording, Jessica?
All right, well, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Uh, sure, I was born, uh, New Jersey, moved to Elkins, West Virginia when I was young and raised there. I go back there often to, uh, help with my parents who are getting on an age and I've lived here in Jefferson County since nineteen ninety-two. Long career doing various things here, um, currently working on a magazine about small towns in West Virginia in the area. And, uh, working at a local, uh, river and trail, driving a bus.
Um, why are you interested in this position?
Um, to be honest, I really wasn't at first, um, this kind of came out of the blue to me. Uh, it wasn't something that I sought out, um, in fact, most of what I'd heard about the county commission was chaos. Making national news, um, there's really not something that I'm interested in. Uh, but I do have a daughter who's sixteen who goes to Jefferson High, um, and I thought mostly about her. And what we talk about as we drive around the county, um, one of those things being, uh, developments coming in and, um, it's funny, although she didn't realize that she was raised in a development, um, she was looking at developments going, oh, my gosh, why would anyone live there? Um, and ours was just older, there's a lot of trees in it, there's less houses, um. So I did, I, I thought about that a lot and what this county is going to be to her, you know, I'm kind of still young, but I'm, I'm on my way out and this is, this is hers, um. So, and she and I talked about that, uh, a bit, um, and then I was also asked to put together a biography and it kind of let me reflect a little bit on what I've done. And most of what I've done has had the community in mind in some way, um, I don't know that it, well, I can tell you, it didn't start out that way. Uh, but when I saw what I could do, how I could impact, how I could help. And these were people that were directly next door to me or across the county, um, all that really sunk in and so I think that's why, um, and in fact, I, in, in speaking with members of Mountain Party, I, I kept saying, I'm not the right person for you and, um, or to be considered. And, uh, they kept saying, well, you're, you're saying all the things that make us want to consider you. So, uh, I, I've thought about that and, and so why I'm here is I, I think I can, uh, help the county in a, in a way that's positive for my daughter and future generations.
Uh, this is a short term, short term position and may last days or into November. What do you hope to accomplish during your term?
Um, for one, some civility, honestly, um, looking at the Jefferson County Commission being in the news everywhere. I, I was really hoping to, uh, to not have any of that, in fact, have a, you know, headline being Jefferson County Commission, uh, everything normal, everything A-OK. Uh, the only other thing which I, which I know for, for any short term and times that I've been in things short term, you can't really get a ton accomplished, there's going to be a learning curve. Really, the only thing, if I could get anything done, it would be to, um, just examine, uh, what the plan for growth is. I know growth is coming, progress is coming, it will not be stopped and I wouldn't want to stop it. But if there could be just a couple of things, um, added little helpful notes, like, oh, we're going to do this, maybe we could look at it in, in this kind of way. You know, make sure that groundwater isn't being polluted or, or looked at when developments are coming in, that, that sort of thing. Uh, there's no major goals that I've got to accomplish in a short amount of time.
Which strategies do you employ to foster a positive and productive work environment?
Can you ask that one more time?
What strategies do you employ to foster a positive and productive work environment?
Uh, listening, thinking, taking a moment before I speak. I do get in trouble and I have been known for speaking my mind and I, I have opinions and I do say them. Uh, but I have learned if I take a second, uh, everyone else around me takes a second as well. There, there's, that's probably the main thing, I've, I've, there've been many things in, in leadership that I have done, but I think taking the time to listen really kind of, then the next person can take a second to listen or think as well.
Yes, um, can you explain to me your understanding of the Open Meetings Act?
I do not have an understanding of the Open Meetings Act. I am first and foremost not a politician or, um, yeah, that was, that was part of my, my thought of this, this is new to me, so I, I do not have an understanding of that.
There would be a learning curve, but basically Open Meetings Act means we have to have an agenda, a posted agenda. So the public knows what we will be discussing for that day. We can't deviate, you know, bring up new topics and vote on things because the public doesn't know about it. And there are certain exceptions when we can go into executive session to, uh, speak, uh, about certain things like legal, um, things and so forth, so, um, but it, it's a very important component of our work here, um, and how we conduct our business.
That is, uh, all of that makes sense and I have seen that in action before and I've seen, um, and been with friends that want to go in and speak or do something and I know for a fact through my lifetime, I've seen when you have a meeting, it is organized and you can't just, well, this is what I want and this is the day to do it and we're going to stop it. And there's always a procedure for everything, um, so on that end, I, I very much understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for replying, I'm asking two questions of all the candidates and then a series of questions for, uh, candidates who are registered members of the Mountain Party. The first question, I think you touched on this already in response to Commissioner Soliver's question. What are your views for Jefferson County and what do you think, uh, would be your priorities for the next six months?
Um, well, and to, to clarify, I think, um, the views of Jefferson County is it's a county in, um, progress. It is a growing community and, um, and this is part I, I have thought on, it's a growing community and, and if, if there can just be some intelligent design or thoughtful design to that, then that's really my, my goal, not to stop it, not to wrangle it, um, it's been here and it's coming, it's just little things to tweak that so that the county moving forward is a, a beautiful and vibrant county.
Thank you, this question could sound a little bit tricky or complicated, but I'm asking everybody the same question and it actually does come up on the commission, so it's important and relevant. If you want a policy outcome, or in other words, if you want something to happen and a motion is made to accomplish that thing. But the commission's legal counsel advises that the motion is illegal or that it violates state code in some way. How would you proceed in that scenario?
Um, I suppose it would depend on the timing of when that motion could be killed or not asked again. So the first thing that, so if I've made a motion or there's a motion I want to have passed and it can't legally happen, then the next, um, my, my plan would be you say, well, when can we look at this again to change it to make it fall under state guidelines? And either bring it forward amended or not be able to and have to change it completely or not have it come up again.
Understood, thank you. And, uh, you're a registered member of the Mountain Party, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, um, I'm deeply concerned about the Mountain Party platform, uh, which includes mandatory sexual orientation education for elementary school students, single payer healthcare, free college and race-based reparations, we do not have time to cover those alarming positions. Uh, but we do have time to talk about things that would be directly relevant to your work as commissioner. So I have a few questions that are based on the Mountain Party platform, I just went to their website, pulled it from there and I ask this of all of the candidates who are registered members of the Mountain Party. First on policing, um, as commissioner, would you work to quote gradually disarm local police, uh, which in our county would be the county sheriff and his deputies?
I would not, no.
Right, and, um, as was said earlier, and I, uh, totally understand, just because you're a registered member of a party doesn't mean you agree with everything in the platform, so that's why I'm asking these questions.
Those are good questions to, to ask.
On taxation, do you support the elimination of corporate tax breaks and subsidies? And in your view, would that include tax increment financing, sometimes known as a TIF, which is under discussion with the commission, uh, with, with respect to the Hilltop Project, the hotel in Harper's Ferry?
Um, I would say I don't have enough information to stand on that, I, I can't say I would be against that, that, there would have to be more information brought, but, um,
Fair enough, yeah, do you support the creation of a new tax called a quote land value tax?
What would that land value tax entail?
I don't know.
Yeah, without knowing, I wouldn't be able to support anything.
Fair enough. On agriculture, a couple of questions here, do you support removing government subsidies to farmers who do not quote, practice organic agriculture and quote?
If the subsidy is based on organic agriculture and they're not doing it, then If the subsidy is based on organic agriculture and they're not doing it, then I wouldn't see why they should get subsidies.
Okay. As commissioner, would you work to create a farm worker bill of rights for illegal immigrants? Well, for farm workers, but inclusive of illegal immigrants?
To promote illegal immigrants working? Is that what that is?
That's up to you, but I'll just repeat the question. As commissioner, would you work to create a farm worker bill of rights for illegal immigrants?
I don't think I would promote anything that would further something illegal happening.
Fair enough. I have three questions on housing and zoning. This is a topic that is a good deal of the commission's business. It's on the front page of the newspaper this week and every other week. It's a big deal for the commission. Do you believe it is the government's responsibility to quote construct and maintain sufficient public housing to ensure an end to homelessness, end quote?
I think it's a great idea. I would like people to not be forced into homelessness. But that said, I don't know the answer or that the government needs to be providing that. I think that's a bigger question and I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Thank you. Yes. Do you support creating a quote mobile home cooperative fund to provide loans to support cooperative ownership of mobile home parks, end quote?
I'm not sure I understand all. Can you say that again?
No problem.
Sorry.
Do you support creating a quote, this is from the website, mobile home cooperative fund to provide loans to support cooperative ownership of mobile home parks, end quote?
I'm not sure what cooperative means in that and owning a cooperative mobile home park. I'd support anybody that's looking to get a leg up, whether is that a business or I'm not sure what it... If it's supporting helping someone, that sounds fine. You've looked at the website more than I have. I can tell you that.
Only two more. Yeah, I think, well, I'm not going to comment right now. Okay. Do you believe the county commission should provide quote apartments for homeless people, end quote?
If it falls under the purview of what the county commission was based to do. But otherwise, I don't know that, that doesn't sound like something the county commission would take on and...
And the last question, I'm sorry to even ask this, but it is on the website and it's part of the party platform. So I need to ask, do you support the decriminalization of prostitution?
I don't know. I'd have to think on that. Yeah, I really don't. That's, I'd have to take some time to think about that. That's kind of out of the blue.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a violent crime, but also I'd, you know, that doesn't sound like something that me walking into Jefferson County Commission, I'd like, I've thought about that one.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for bearing with me as I ask questions from the Mountain Party platform. That's all the questions I have right now.
May I say something about, so I joined the Mountain Party in 2007 because simply I was disillusioned with the Republican and Democrat parties. And it looks like I'm still that way. Everything is just really spreading so far on either end. And there was just something beautiful about the name, the Mountain Party. It was the only other option to come up with. And I am a West Virginian and I do love the mountains. And, you know, I'm an environmentalist, but I'm not staunch about it and it just... So I don't, I don't know that they're, I'm not even great that they're affiliated with the Green Party, but it seemed like of the two options, it was kind of the quietest one. So I wish I knew more about it and I think they do too.
I appreciate that. When I saw the name of the party, I had the same reaction. What a nice match for wild and wonderful West Virginia. Went to the website, did some research and that came up with a few questions. So yeah, thanks for bearing.
Yeah, if they called it the nice party, I would have joined that one too. I don't...
Fair enough. Okay.
No, thank you.
That's all we have. You're more than welcome to stay in the room.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. So you might have any questions for Lee?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Fire away.
Mr. Cochran, you know, I've reread the state codes that we've referenced before, you have referenced before and what we heard from Mr. Kersey. My first question is, do we know if an appeal has been filed by Ms. Jackson or Ms. Graff?
We do not know, or at least I do not know at this point. I'm unaware of one. I have, obviously, they informed us that they were going to file an appeal. And it's my belief that they are filing an appeal. I do not have it in hand at this point.
What is the deadline for filing an appeal? Is that the 31st?
One has to file a notice of appeal within 30 days. And so that would be tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
As a matter of practice, most attorneys do not wait until the last second to file that.
Okay. So anybody else can chime in because I don't know the answers to all these questions, having never done this before or even observed it. So since we don't know about an appeal, if we want to make appointments today, we can only do a temporary appointment? Is that correct?
No, there's a dual pathway. You can appoint someone or you can appoint a temporary. The difference is, and as the Secretary of State explained in their letter, if you appoint a temporary appointment, then that will expire at the end of 30 days. And because the law also requires you to make your permanent so-called appointment within that same 30-day period. That would mean if you don't do that, then it goes to the executive committees of the party, of the same party that the person belonged to when they left. So the wrinkle, as the Secretary of State explained to us, is that the a temporary appointment, if there is an appeal file, would then continue until such time as the Supreme Court made a decision on the appeal.
Mr. Chairman, first I'll note how unfortunate it is that we are in this scenario to begin with. But here we are. I'm impressed by all of the candidates. Clearly, we have five people who would fill the role, excuse me, fill the role with honor and respect for others. That's what we need right now. We have a duty to fill the vacancies and we need to follow the letter of the law. As we discussed when setting this meeting, there are two different statutes that govern in our current predicament, as Mr. Cochran just outlined, and referred to it as a dual pathway. In my view, it would be wise to follow both statutes concurrently. That requires appointments that match the party affiliation of the commissioners who were removed from office. That means one from the Mountain Party and one from the Republican Party. I am a registered Republican. I've been appointed by the Republican Party. It comes as no surprise that I'm familiar with the party platform of the GOP. On the other hand, I'm deeply concerned about the party platform of the Mountain Party. But in my view, we need to appoint someone from the Mountain Party. Of the Republican candidates, I thought both were very impressive and I would be happy to work with either on the commission. All candidates agreed that we ought to listen to counsel in response to my question, which is a relief given our recent history. But I thought Mr. Upson's answer to my question about legal counsel was unique. He was, he agreed we should listen to legal counsel and also work with legal counsel to accomplish the desired policy while staying within the law. I agree with that view. We must operate within the law, but there's more than one way to skin a cat, as they say. Of the Mountain Party candidates, first, thank you to both gentlemen for applying. I would note Mr. Cook's statement upfront that he does not agree with the party platform in its entirety. Clearly, from his answers to my questions, he's an open-minded person. Both candidates are genuine, good people, but my preference would be to appoint Mr. Cook. So I'm looking at Mr. Upson and Mr. Cook based on the interviews.
Commissioners, just to be certain that we're clear, if you're doing a temporary appointment, you do not, the party affiliation and residence are not required.
Right.
If you're doing the other appointment, then they are. And the requirements under 310-7 are that the appointee must have been a member of that political party for at least 60 days prior to the occurrence of the vacancy. And obviously, come from the, come from the the same district as...
Thanks for the clarification. It's not a matter of opinion. I don't disagree. In my view, it's prudent to follow both statutes at the same time. So that is my recommendation. That's how I'll be voting. And curious to hear what you all think.
Well, just looking at the chart we have, Mr. Cook, it looks like the information I have became a member of the Mountain Party on May 9th. That's not within 30 days.
So I don't think he would be eligible for appointment under 310-7. I think he would be eligible for appointment under the temporary.
Okay, so he could be a candidate for a temporary, which would be a 30 days, is what you're saying?
Well, it would be 30 days, which would expire 30 days from the day of the vacancy. So that would expire tomorrow, unless there's an appeal file. If there's an appeal file, it is a little twisted. It's a little twisted.
That's what's giving me problems here.
And I had somebody ask me this earlier this week while we were talking about this subject. According to Dean Kersey, I'll add to this, that the executive committees for these two positions will interview, I'm assuming they'll interview or put forth two names for each vacancy to be on the ballot this fall. It's, I believe the date to do this, to have the names to the clerk is August 13th. I think our clerk's sitting in the back of the room. I think, I think it's 70... Yeah, I think it's, I'm going off memory here. I believe it's 78 days prior to the election and we'll verify that. But that's, that's the process moving forward as we appoint a temporary position. And then the person that is serving in this position will serve until the election results are certified in November. Is that, I believe that's true.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that and add that to this conversation. All right. Well, legal is, I know this is confusing because these two laws run parallel.
Yes.
It is confusing. I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Tab.
So, and let me make sure I understand where we're at. So if we make two temporary appointments today, they would only serve till tomorrow?
Unless there's an appeal file.
Unless there is an appeal file. No, we're required to file the vacancy within 30 days. So it's...
And they're required to file an appeal within 30 days as well. But, you know, we're here.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So what I'll do, I'm going to open up nominations. We will nominate a name and then we'll close nominations and then we'll vote on that name or names that are nominated. Fair enough?
Well, are they going to be temporary? We don't know.
Well, I think, I think, I think the motion needs to include to be appointed under each code 667 and 310. So we'd cover both. That's how the motion, I believe, needs to be read.
I think we can remain silent on that.
What's your suggestion?
I don't think you have to include it in the motion.
I think the statute probably contemplates that you're appointing them under, you know, the code section. So I, I think you probably need to identify.
You need to identify the code.
I would think so. That would probably be the safest.
Okay, fair enough.
I'm going to listen to counsel.
Yes.
A lot of this, a lot of this is really murky in, it's, you know, a bit of, the law could be clearer. And we're heavily relying on the Secretary of State.
All right. Fair enough. All right. I will open up nominations for the Harpers Ferry District seat that was vacated. Would anybody like to nominate somebody for that seat? And that was vacated by a Republican candidate.
No surprise, I said it already, Mr. Upson.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other nominations? All right. If none, if there are no objections, the nominations are closed. I will move a motion to point Kelvin Upson to the vacated seat in the Harpers Ferry District to cover code 667 and West Virginia code 667 and West Virginia code 310.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I will now open up the floor for nominations for the Shepherdstown District seat that was vacated by a Mountain Party candidate. Or yes?
Well, no surprise. I'll, oh, go ahead, please.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I've said it already. So no surprise, I'll nominate Mr. Cook.
Okay. And this is where it's going to get murkier. I'd like to nominate Patricia Nolan. She's a Democrat. It would be a temporary appointment. So we'll see.
All right. All in favor?
Well, let me say a few words about Ms. Nolan. She definitely has experience. She knows how to disagree with people in a public format and be respectful of other people's opinions. And I think that's critical right now as we try to move forward and make progress on numerous issues in the county. And like I say, her background is deep and it's hard to come by a better person. So I'm supporting Ms. Nolan.
I agree with everything you said. Ms. Nolan has served this county well for many years and it's no secret. I am sitting in the seat from the Cape Town District that she served in for 12 years. And I told her from day one I had big shoes to fill. And, and she's done a great job and I have a lot of respect for Ms. Nolan. Absolutely.
So this would have, you would have to appoint her as a temporary?
All right. All in favor for Ms. Nolan, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, we've got closed, that I closed nominations. I'll move to closed nominations. All right, I'll second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of appointing Ms. Nolan, say aye.
Aye.
All for Mr. Cook, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion will pass to one to nominate Mr. Cook to the temporary position to cover under West Virginia code 667 or potentially 310.
Thanks. I think I might have missed my chance for a comment, but I wanted to thank Ms. Nolan for her service to the county. And as I outlined earlier, my decision is based on the party affiliation for compliance with the law. In my view, it's not a personal decision. Everybody was highly qualified. Thank you.
I agree 100%. All right. If there are no objections, we're adjourned. Thank you. I agree 100%. All right. If there are no objections, we're adjourned. Thank you.